All right, we're back in session. Don't we have Mr. Boyes?
Thank you, Mr. Moses. It's been a fairly long meeting so far, and exciting meeting. And I want to be as concise as possible chairing some budget information with the board of the community. This is the time of year that school districts across the state are making their final arrangements for their operational plan for the succeeding fiscal quarters of July. And that process is viewed through the perspective of the financial framework for the annual school budget. And the annual school budget adoption, that process culminates at the end of April with a public hearing on the budget. And we've traditionally had a more global executive level review of the budget and all of its components, really focusing on, during our public hearings, really focusing on the performance metrics, whether it be financial or academic performance, and in some cases, the blending of the two. But we often have time to drill down into some of the specific areas of the budget and take a closer look at the mechanics of the scale and the scope of the work that happens there. So tonight, I want to just concentrate on three areas that I think are worth our attention. The first has to do with property taxes and the tax levy. How the property tax cap that we all know of, how exactly that works, and how it applies to Freehold Regional, which is a unique system with eight municipalities that feed in to our high school system. I also want to touch base on buildings and grounds and transportation and give you a sense of scale of the work that we do in those departments as well. But first, let's just talk about the property tax cap. The general understanding here, the common language that you use on the street is that there's a 2% cap on property taxes. Now, I just wanted, you can read through that yourself, there are some exceptions to that where you can expand that cap beyond 2% for certain situations if you add enrollment growth beyond certain limits or health insurance increases, or if there's a shift in responsibility from one school district to another school district, which does happen from time to time, there'll be adjustments in the cap for that as well. But by and large, the way it works is 2% on the previous years left. Now, there's a feature of the law called bank cap. And what bank cap does is it says to school districts, listen, if you are eligible to take X amount in a given year, you have the option of taking less than that and simply deferring the remaining piece that you didn't access into one of the two succeeding years. So when those succeeding years arrive, the 2% is available for that particular year as well as bank cap that you may have deferred from previous years. So you hear the term "bank cap," we know that the term 2% is the common understanding. But so those are the components of it. For Freehold Regional, since the cap law has been in place, we've taken four years of a 0, 1%, 2%, and this proposed budget is also 2%. We've had access to bank caps and a number of these other exclusions along the way. All told, if you look at those 15 years and look at what levy was, what could have been in our annual budgets versus what could have been, there's some $15 million that we have not taken advantage of over that time. But that's the decision that this district made that's right for our programs and right for our community at that time. Freehold Regional is, as I said earlier, a bit unique in that the property tax levy is allocated among the eight municipalities. Now, a typical school district only services one municipality, so there is no allocation with the entire levy is borne by the taxpayers in that particular municipality. But Freehold Regional, the way that the levy in any given year is apportioned to the eight municipalities depends on two things, primarily property value and secondarily enrollment. So I wanted to just spend, and it's not terribly complicated, but there are a few steps to it. And this presentation will be available on the web shortly after tonight's meeting. And certainly you can always reach out to me if you want to. But I'm going to walk through the process of the allocation of the levy here, just so that you get a sense of what are the factors that are going to influence this from year to year. First, some context, some point of reference. About 65% of our general fund budget is property taxes. You can see here the other components. This is actually the revenues from the proposed budget for fiscal year 2015. Just one note, you can see $121.5 million for the general fund. Also, the debt service fund, which is a fund that isolates debt service payments from past referendum. There's $4.5 million of property taxes that funds that. The balance of it is funded by state aid for debt service aid. So the two of them taken together is $125 million and change for Freehold Regional that gets apportioned out among the eight municipalities. So how exactly does that work? Well, the first step is to look at each of the eight towns in isolation. And this is an important distinction because later in this formula, the next, very next step, actually, it is not, towns are not viewed in isolation, but rather in relation to each other. So the equalized property value of any particular town is split between what they call the high school equalized evaluation and the elementary school equalized evaluation. That split, the percentage, is based on the total school age children in town in that municipality. And the percentage that are high school aged is the percentage that's applied to the equalized property value and put into that high school equalized value pot. Just a quick word about equalized value and assessed value. Okay, two different terms that I know that you hear when you look at your property tax bill or when you read about property taxes from your various local government units. Each town has an assessed value. So when you look at your bill for your home, you're going to see what the assessed value is. The assessed value is not necessarily an approximation of fair market value. It's probably a percentage of fair market value. But it doesn't much matter within that particular municipality as long as everybody is on the same basis. So if your assessment of your property is 80% of fair market value, that's fine as long as everybody else's in-town needs as well, because those taxes within that town are split up, appropriated within your relationship to the other property owners. From town to town, there are different levels of this percentage of what's equalized value, fair market value. Fair market value, for the purposes of this conversation, would be synonymous with equalized value. So the state, when it looks at Freehold Regional, it says, we can't look at property value from a municipal, the eight municipalities, and compare them to each other if their assessed values are on different bases when compared to fair market value. So it equalizes them. It makes it apples to apples and converts everybody's assessed value to equalized value, which makes perfect sense. So that's why you'll see equalized property values around here. So in your particular municipality, if you have 100 school-aged kids in town and 30 of them go to our high school age and 70 are our elementary age, then 30% of your equalized property value goes into this pot. So what happens to that high school equalized value on a per-town basis? All eight of those pots, from each of those individual municipal calculations, come together to form the total high school evaluation. And the percentage share of the regional levy is apportioned among the eight towns based on their relation to the total of the entire blue column. Okay? So the equalized value, the high school share, comes into the towns altogether, comprise the high school evaluation pot. And then the percentage shares of the levy are based on those amounts. So taking this through to the next step, now, there's a lot of information on here. Let me just, these are the actual numbers. And it's a lot to digest, but you move that through, and the actual total regional levy of that $125 million, you can see is apportioned, actually, you really can't see because it drops off the end of the screen here. But the percentage share, the next to last column, you can see is there the equalized fair market value, equal property value of that particular town in relation to the total high school equalized valuation amount. And from there, the levy is split up among the eight towns. Now, here's the thing that doesn't intuitively make sense. This year, and we'll take a look at this, but this year of the eight towns, four are going up and four are going down. So to the casual observer to say, well, why are, you know, these four towns' property taxes going up and the other four going down? What could influence that? And really, to understand that a little bit better, this is good information, but it's even better information when compared to the year before, to understand why there's a shift in the tax levy attributed to each of the individual towns. So this set of percentages here show empirically what we just looked at versus the year before. So let's just pick an example and run it through. The total equalized value of all the municipalities is down 7%. Seven of the eight are down. And Alton's up 2.2%. But you can see that they're to different extents are they down. For the purposes of your regional tax levy, a reduction in the property value of your town works in your favor, because that's less to split up, remember, right, with the high school and the elementary, it's less of a base equalized value to split up, which means you have less going into the regional pot, and then therefore you'll have less to share. If you look at the enrollment, and here's where things, I think, really start to skew the formula. Any formula that the state can use, and this formula, how these taxes are allocated, the state imposes on the districts, so they simply let us know, here are the equalized value, here are the enrollment numbers, here are the percentage shares. But one of the things that will cause fluctuations in property taxes by town by town are things like changes in enrollment at different levels. For example, you look at our enrollment, and that's that kind of center block there. Freehold Regional, these eight towns', K-12 enrollment is down 1.6%. Elementary enrollment's down 1.9%, high school enrollment down 1.0%, so there's already a difference going on there. But if you look at, we'll just go from the top, in Coltsnap, the elementary enrollment is down 9.5%, while the high school enrollment stays fairly stable, it's actually up a few percentage points. But what impact does this have on, in this example, Coltsnap's percentage share and the ultimate amount of the regional levy that falls into that Coltsnap pot? Because, and there's nothing going on at the high school level worth mentioning, but because the elementary value is dropping, if you think that through, that means a greater chunk, a greater percentage of the property value in that town is moved into the high school pot, which then is going to drive up the percentage share. Up and down with the effect of Freehold Borough, we're seeing enrollments drop, for the most part, across the board. On some of the smaller towns here, and the abbreviations were on the previous slide, but Coltsnap, Englishtown, Farmingdale, Freehold Borough, Freehold Township, Howard, Manal and Marlborough, down the left-hand side. Take Farmingdale, for example. Farmingdale's a relatively small town, so changes in their enrollment by just a few kids could have significant impact on the portion of their property value that goes towards the high school calculation. So there is some volatility to this. As I said, there is no one formula, I think, that is without any cons and all pros. There's going to be pros and cons to it, no matter how you do that. You think that this particular formula is a bit abrupt, in that year-to-year changes could have significant changes on the property tax rates in the various towns. So again, this will be up on the web, if you want to dig into that a little bit more, feel free to. But just to round it out, so high school percentage share, this is, remember, this is the change, this particular slide is the change of the current year over the previous year. And you can see those, for Farmingdale, for example, is 22% decrease in that percentage of equalized value that's brought into the high school calculation. And you can see the impact right across the board of that. All in all, our tax levy is going up by 1.94%, which is 2% on the general fund levy. And that debt service levy is, for the most part, flat net 1.9. But that's the dynamic of the formula. So there's a couple stops. And like I said, it is primarily driven by the property wealth of the communities in relationship to each other, as determined by the enrollment breakdown on a municipal-by-municipal basis. This, the budget being presented at the public hearing, which is on April 28th at the administration building in Englishtown, here are the tax rates from that proposed budget. And you can see what we've just talked about is reflected in the ultimate rates that you see here. Interestingly, once the Freehold Regional levy is broken into those eight pieces, it then goes back to a municipal-by-municipal basis and is allocated to the property owners within that municipality based on their assessed value as the other local taxes are as well. So, like I said, it's got some twists and turns in it, and it takes, it might take a little bit of time just to digest that, really understand the dynamic of the relationship between changes in property value and changes in enrollment and different areas of the enrollment. Just a side note, the elementary enrollment down 1.9% and the high school enrollment down 1%. The overall drop in enrollment is making its way to the high school. All right? So if we look down to the elementary level, or the grade levels at the elementary schools, it's coming. So, but we are in a better position than the elementary districts because we can see it coming. They can't see it coming because it's five-year-olds just coming to the town. So that was one of the areas that I wanted to talk about. And then quickly, and I don't think I can spend, I can spend a lot of time here today trying to give you a full sense of scale of buildings and grounds and transportation, and I still would not do it justice. I have just some data points up there for me to take a look at and get a sense. One that I did not include here was work orders. Work orders are initiated by district staff for a variety of reasons, things that they come across during their day of work. The number of work orders submitted to date, and this is, there's still three months left in the year, so this is from July 1 until the beginning of April, is 7,000. 7,000 individual requests for work district-wide coming into the Buildings and Grounds Department. So you have 119 staff members, just to give you a sense, and here's the structure of the department, but there's been a tremendous amount of changes in this department in recent years. There was a significant cut of staff members several years back, including seven of 16 supervisors, so nearly half of the supervisory staff, 16% of all Buildings and Grounds staff overall, in some significant budget reductions. And under the leadership of our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. LaGravines, we've made some, I think, excellent strides in really maximizing the resources that we do have available, particularly in the way of staff. One of the things that that pad did was to take a look at the hours of coverage that we currently have and how building usage was being supported by base regular work hours versus overtime. And what we did, what he did, was come up with, you know, a staggered, a more staggered schedule. So we have coverage in our buildings from 6:00 a.m. till midnight. You know, these high schools, these six high schools are hopping every night of the week, and Saturday all day, and on occasion Sunday as well. There's a lot of coverage to be done, and I think the way that we've done it for staggering our staff accommodates the needs of the operation during the school day, which is obviously our focus, but also redeployed some of our staff into the evening where really some of the, all of the hard work cleaning does go on. So we've been able to do that and expand the cycle crew as well to accommodate athletics on the weekends and really gave these kids all the opportunities that they're going to need these buildings to do. So as I said earlier, this is a truth. I'm not going to do it justice. I mean, there's nothing significant, if you look, and here's the budget being proposed, there's nothing significant, no significant changes in the budgets here. Just some highlights that I wanted to point out. In this building, in Coltsnap High School, and this is fairly unique for schools, we have our, there is no water sewer service coming through here. This is, there's, we have well water, so we have a whole system, a gray water system, it's called, where we're managing water, the water supply in the building, and we're also have a sewer plant within the building called a gray water system. So it's very, it's very complex. It's fairly expensive. You can imagine the engineering, the environmental concerns, the number of the regulatory things that we need to make sure we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed. We recently had a really good conversation with the administration over at Freehold Township, who run us over. And they're people who we have a very good relationship with. And we're taking a look at, is there a way that they can provide the engineering, professional oversight that we currently pay outside engineers to do? They have the capacity to do that, they have the expertise to do that. So we're going to take a very close look at it. I want to obligate the folks at Freehold Township as they still, you know, review the situation. But it's those types of partnerships that we try and foster with our municipal colleagues so that we could make the community dollars go as long as we can. Grounds, as you know, we discussed, and Mr. Hesseger asked me last board meeting about the total cost of snow, bad year on snow, for sure, came in at, you know, well over $400,000, that's combined with contractors and our in-house staff, as well as salt and sand and those types of things. Now, for sure, we did not have that kind of money set aside in the budget for snow. But Buildings and Grounds is one of those areas that is, it is a little more volatile, and you do need to be flexible. We have not budgeted, we're not in a position to be able to budget that kind of money for next year either, so we'll take the same risks. One of our philosophies is that, you know, with the passage of time, risk diminishes, particularly when it comes to snow. So when there are things that are included in this department's budget, for example, equipment replacement, those are things that are deferred until later in the year when some of the risks have gone, and then we still have the ability to do what we will. But if the year moves on and things like, you know, excessive snow, we may lose the ability to replace equipment, and I'm just using that as an example, but certainly something that we had planned to do, we're no longer being able to do. But it's just a way that we want to manage the school year and this budget to make sure we can accommodate the things that need to be accommodated without compromising our long-term plan, which we do our best to do. Buildings and grounds, and I think this is not Freehold Regional-specific, but it's something that has, in recent years, in lean times, been one of the areas that has seen a lot of limitations in funding. And, you know, my conversations with Mr. LaGravines, and, you know, you can keep equipment working, but you can only really do that for so long that you move from frugal to inefficient if you have down equipment. And I'm talking like large ticket items that, you know, there's maybe 10 large pieces of equipment, you know, more than $5,000, whether it's large mowers, this is per school, or scrubbers for the floor, those types of things. You know, those, we need to, we are on a cycle, but like I said, these are the areas that fall victim to the unforeseeable events of the school year in the area of Buildings and Grounds. So that's a quick snapshot. A little bit more depth to give you a sense of scale of the operation of that department, certainly not everything. But here's one of the metrics that I did include here is, and this is something that you'll see in the public hearing as well, you know, we want to compare ourselves to high school districts that have that same facility as we do. And we do that in a couple different ways. Statewide, there's 31 high school districts. That's, we're anchoring that as their cost per pupil is 100%, and so see how things rank up until there. The blue is Monmouth, there are five high school districts in Monmouth, that's their average cost per pupil in Buildings and Grounds operations and maintenance area. Across the state, there are nine other districts within our DMP, our district factory group, which have same sociological standing. So those are districts that we would expect to maintain their facilities in the way that we do. And then the purple is Freehold Regional. And you can see that we stack up very well in this particular comparison, so I wanted to share that with you. Moving on to transportation, and I'll give you a moment to look at this, and I really had to have Resnick, who is the Director of Transportation, and when I had asked her, give me more, you know, data points, more data points, more data points, I had to finally say, okay, I got it. I don't, you know, the reality is that those folks are the ones that run the day-to-day operation, and the logistics of that are very complex. And I mean, you can take a look at some of these numbers, 3 million miles a year, 59 different destination schools, and routes are tiers. So, you know, if you have a mechanical exposure, you have, you know, the human element of any operation, certainly, roads could be closed. It's a game of minutes, and those delays and those challenges compound themselves because it's here, it's a very complex logistical operation over there. But what I wanted to, what I really wanted to talk about, or highlight at least, is that the budget that's being put forward this year, and here you can see a summary of that, is less than the budget from fiscal year 2010. So there's five years ago. So what happened in fiscal year 2010? We took a look at the department and that operation and what had evolved into a very contaminated transportation system. I won't go as far as saying door-to-door transportation, but not that far away from it. And it was not the type of situation where we wanted to nibble around the ends and try and clean it up, you know, piece by piece. So what we did is, we took the approach of eliminate the whole thing. And let's say there was no yesterday, Freehold Regional fell out of the sky with all of the town students and schools. There were no routes. There was no yesterday. There were no bus stops. How would you live? And within some parameters that we set, bust And within some parameters that we set, bus stops at corners, maximum walking distances, good communication with the families, we were able to save literally millions of dollars and still provide the same level of service. And that's the work of Pat Resnick, our Director of Transportation, a savings that has sustained itself over the years. Here we are, five years later, we're still some $700,000 less than the fiscal year 2010 budget. So I think we have a very responsible and fair transportation system. I can tell you that not everybody likes it. Unfortunately, we're not able to accommodate every individual family's perception of safety, but we do, you know, fairly apply our distances and the protocols that we use, and we try and do a really good job communicating that, and we've been able to, like I said, sustain this change over a number of years. As with the buildings and grounds operation, I'm not going to be able to do it real justice to actually spend a day in that office. I think you'll get a sense of what it's like to be part of a transportation department that is of that scale. So, like I said, I just wanted to take this opportunity this evening and drop down a little bit further into those three particular areas, primarily how property taxes are allocated among municipalities, and give sort of a point of reference on what are the influences over that allocation, and how are they influencing the property taxes for the current year. So, Board of Local Community, any questions, clarifications? We'll be happy to do that, or you can see double A championship game is not that far away. But as always, feel free to reach out to me on your own, whatever. I've included here, again, the public hearing on the budget is the 28th. There is budget information on the web that you can check in on, and really the state has, DOE data section of the state's website has school performance from really every possible perspective, both financial, academic, and otherwise, so I would invite you to look at that as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No one has signed up, and it's heartbreaking. Next, we have the agenda, and I'm taking the agenda in one shot.
I have an addition.
Oh, you have an addition to the agenda? There is an additional item on the agenda, and that's 17 it will be, and it needs resolved by the Board of Local and, sorry, on recommendation of Superintendent to adopt a settlement agreement and general release in the matter under document number L-4665-14. Okay, so let's take the agenda in one shot. Can you have a motion?
Motion.
A second. Discussion? So you're done? I'll take all. Mr. Astol?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Blatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kauwer?
Yes.
Mr. Vassinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Secher?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have new old business? New business. Quick update, Connecticut 13, Kentucky 6. Okay, can we have a, a turn to the meeting? A second, all in one shot, all the, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you for coming.